Approval consent calendar record. Record excuse absence of Sarah Trumbly and unexcused of Chris Bowen from the October 14th public hearing and regular meeting.
I move to approve consent calendar.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Any to be announced? Moving on, there's no correspondence in the package. I'm assuming there's none. Communications and petitions from visitors, guest speakers, there's none scheduled. Audience comments regarding the agenda item. Three minutes each. Anybody wish to speak on it? Sir?
Hi, my name is Paul Schwartzport. And I'd like to speak about the disposal of the piece of land by the harbor entrance. And I think that the community has spoken to this issue over the years repeatedly. There've been petitions, there've been referendums, and there've been votes that specifically said, "The community would like to keep this as a public space." Now, I am, I've been a appeal metter for 50 years, and I'm certainly in favor of having, helping out the processors. The more processes, the better it is for the fishermen. I would hope that the planning commission could take a step back before they dispose of this valuable piece of land. And look at some alternatives for Camp Two's delivery issues that, you know, they need to address. I think that they could, I don't know specifically, but I don't know, maybe you've looked into them dredging along the breakwater so they could use the property they currently own. Or even tearing down the old science center building, which when I first got to town was actually Cordova Outboard, then it became the Co-op, then it became the Science Center, and now it's a rotten hulk that could be torn down, leaving those pilings existing, and build a really nice ice house on that. And that would not interfere with the entrance to the harbor. So there are some alternatives, and I think they should be explored. Because as, I don't know if you've read Mary Ann Bishop's letter that she wrote to this commission, but it's really well-written, and I think it hits all the points that need to be addressed. Cordova. Oh, I'm sorry. Paul, you wrote the letter.
Not for this meeting.
Yeah, Mary Ann Bishop.
Oh, Mary Ann.
She did write one.
Oh, I missed it. I'm sorry, I missed both.
That's okay. I thought you were telling me I was out of time. But anyway, I'll try to be brief here. But, you know, as it was pointed out in that letter, Cordova's not an easy place to live. And I know that the city council is, the city is desperate for money. Literally desperate. I serve on the board of the Ski Hill, and they've zeroed out our budget. Zero. So it's not an easy situation for anybody. And I understand it's not mismanagement by the city, it's lack of funding from the state and federal government that we, you know, we used to have. But we, we used to have the glacier, and that was a tourist deal where people could roar out to the glacier and watch that glacier cab. Both of the cabins, of course, the glaciers melted back, but we can't go out there because the river has cut off the road. And then we used to have several parks around town that had covered spaces, and they blew away and haven't been replaced. I know that the city wants to diversify. The city council is encouraging the Ski Hill to start with summer operations, which is technically very challenging, actually. It sounds simple, but it isn't, riding tourists up and back down the chairway. So we are working on that to try to increase summer operations. But, you know, think about it. These cruise ships are coming, all these people are looking for something to do in Cordova, they're all going to be lighted into the harbor entrance, and if all they see is a wall of industrial buildings, that's, you know, that's not very attractive. So, you know, like you go to Whittier, they have a nice little park at the end of their breakwater. Seward has the same thing. Every town has some kind of amenity that, where people who live there can view the boats, and people in boats can view the town. And another thing is, I looked at the price. $300,000, $340,000. My son needs a new bow picker, so we've been pricing bow pickers. That's what a used bow picker costs. So I don't know what kind of business acumen that this, the city council has to accept a bid of $340,000 for that priceless piece of property. It's absolutely outrageous. So I'll, I'll put there, but I think you know what I'm thinking, and I, I hope you will read Mary Ann's letter and take it to heart, because this issue has come up and the citizens of Cordova have repeatedly said that they want this to be public space. And I believe that the Camp Two cannery has other options, and I think they should be looked at. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Try and keep it a little short.
Well, I'd like to talk.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Belle Mickelson, Martha, Belle Mickelson, from 206 Lake Avenue. And I feel like parks are like what make the community great. And like as Paul was mentioning, you know, we can't go to mile 50 anymore. And for people that don't have cars, it's just so nice to have things in town where people can walk around and see things. And, you know, that piece of property is like the best in the whole town. And, you know, we can still make money from food trucks and, but I mean, it's so beautiful to go and watch the wildlife and watch the boats coming in and going in and out. And I just think it's way too precious to let go, and I agree, the price is so little. I mean, you could buy a house for, I mean, for that, you know? I mean, it's, it's like the best lot in town. And I just hope that you will agree to keep it that way.
I'll go. I'm gonna read mine. My name is Paula Payne, and my address is 1805 Lakeview Drive. I would like to remind the commission that on July 2nd, city council meeting, at this July 2nd city council meeting, a petition signed by almost 300 Cordovans requesting the harbor entrance lot be declared a public space for the benefit and enjoyment of all Cordovans was presented to the city council prior to its vote to issue the RFP. Public opposition to selling this harbor entrance lot is widespread. Ten years ago, the city of Cordova went through a similar exercise of issuing an RFP for the harbor entrance lot. Council then proceeded to pass an ordinance to sell the lot to a private business despite public opposition. To refresh memories, the result was a citizen's petition for a referendum that put the ordinance on the ballot, and the citizens voted resoundingly no to the sale of the harbor entrance lot. Privatizing our harbor and losing control of our harbor entrance is shortsighted and a bad idea. The lot cost a million and a half dollars to build over 10 years ago, and is now, it is a priceless view lot that enhances the value of Cordova's waterfront immeasurably, and it enhances the quality of life in Cordova. It is priceless. Why would we sell it to the private sector for a mere fraction of its worth? What is to stop the new owners from reselling it in a few years for its true value to another private entity like a cruise line, perhaps? I would also like to remind the commission that the city conducted a public survey that quite clearly expressed results in favor of keeping the harbor entrance lot in the public domain. These numbers at the end of my letter here are from the July 2nd city council packet. Anyway, you add the numbers, the results indicate approximately 70% of Cordovans are against privatizing the harbor entrance lot. Cordova's downtown waterfront has 1.8 miles of solid industry stretching from behind the AC grocery store around to the ferry terminal. There's no place except the Breakwater Trail, and it's adjoining micro park that's in the works, to walk and enjoy our downtown waterfront. And while the micro park is a lovely little space, it's on the mud flats, it's too far from the water for families and people to gather to watch the fishing fleet come and go. The people of Cordova deserve to continue to use the harbor entrance lot as a public space to wave at the fleet and watch them. They don't deserve to have their beautiful harbor entrance lot taken away from them. Camp Two's proposal offers the people of Cordova three picnic tables at the edge of an industrial zone separated by a chain link fence. Our community deserves more than three picnic tables against a chain link fence for a park. What Cordovans need and want is a large covered picnic shelter with multiple picnic tables underneath. We used to have covered picnic areas like this at Nirvana Park, Child's Glacier, Hollis Hendricks Park. We have lost these public gathering spaces, and they have not been replaced. The quality of life in Cordova has gone down. Turning the beautiful harbor entrance lot with its 360-degree vista industrial is not going to help the quality of life in Cordova, nor is it going to improve the curbside appeal of Cordova as a place to live or a destination to visit. Retaining this lot as a green space with a future covered picnic shelter will be more financially beneficial to Cordova in the long run than selling it at a fraction of its worth as a convenience to one business. Camp, well, like Paul said, Camp Two already has waterfront property. A better consolidation of their business would be to build a dock on the property they already own. I know there's a rumor going around that they've been told they can't dredge for some reason. I'd like to see that letter from the Army Corps of Engineers saying they're not allowed to dredge to their property to, you know, consolidate over on the waterfront property they already have. I do think they have other options. And so I think the people would like the planning commission and the city council to designate the harbor entrance lot a public space so we can begin fundraising to build a large covered picnic area. The pioneers of Alaska, the Cordova Historical Society, and 300 of your fellow citizens have pledged their support of this idea. Much has been written about the mental and physical health benefits of being near the ocean and in nature, and much has also been written about public green spaces adding immeasurably to the quality of life. Public places, especially waterfront public use areas, are beneficial as long-term economic drivers, places that both citizens and visitors highly value and look for when living or visiting, living in or visiting communities. Quality of life is why we choose to live in Cordova. And not all Cordovans or visitors, like Belle said, are fortunate enough to live with a view of the ocean or own cars or boats to access the ocean. This lot is a walkable lot for everyone. Let's preserve this priceless harbor entrance lot for future generations of Cordovans. We can do this. We can create our own reality, right? We can do this. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Karen Schwartzport, 401 Echoes Village. I would agree with everybody, what everybody has said so far, and I'd like to see that place be a public space for everybody. I think the community has spoken, and that's what they would like to see. And I think we have a wonderful fishing community, but we're also, are developing a tourist component to Cordova. So I'd like, that would be an excellent place for tourists to go to and see our fleet come in, coming and going, and all the wildlife, and the view is just phenomenal there. And to create an industrial space where nobody could utilize it would be a waste, especially at such a low cost. So, thank you.
Sir?
Right. Sorry for coming in late. I have mixed feelings about this, this whole.
Can you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Bill Lindo. I live on 1103 Pipe Street. So I've been a big supporter of Camp Two's operation from the beginning. They're wonderful people, they've done a great thing for the Gilnet fleet and the town as a whole, and they continue to do that. Having said that, I also really would like to see that Northville lot, you know, be at least part of it, public space, a good part of it. But I would very much like to see Camp Two be able to increase their efficiency of their operation, and they might be able to do that by way of having a dock at their plant. I just don't know, you know, what the cost factors are. That's, that's their bailiwick. But anyway, like I said, I have mixed feelings. I would very much like to see Camp Two, you know, have the ability to increase their efficiency of their operations instead of trucking ice and fish across the harbor from one end to the other. I also would very much like to see that Northville lot be a public space with, you know, like a shelter on it. It would be wonderful. I'm on the Cordova Covered Spaces team, if you want to call it that, or wanting, you know, to get covered spaces for the public and town. So anyway, that's kind of where I'm at on this. I'm hoping that there's alternatives, you know, to building on the Northville lot. And in general, I would much rather see the city lease their property to businesses rather than sell it. I think it's important that the city maintains control of the property over the long term.
Anybody else want to speak? Mayor?
Can I just add one?
Yeah.
So Kristen Smith, 507 Forest Street. I just want to point out, I mean, to Bill's point about leasing versus purchasing, in my mind, the purchase price of the property is not the biggest factor, it's what does Camp Two's ability to expand their operation add to our economy? We are struggling to bring more fish, to land more fish in Cordova, to help with our raw fish tax, to help people employed and, keep people employed in the shoulder season, and, and really help add to our fishing economy. So the purchase price factors into, if I were to be making the decision, into it less than what does it add overall to the economy? But, and I struggle too, because I, it's clear we need to figure out how to balance our waterfront planning. I think it's, you know, you hear a lot of talk about things happening in silos, and I think it's ironic that we are here and Parks and Rec is over there having their meeting, and we're not, you know, coordinating a little bit more together. I know that Parks and Rec has come up with a conceptual plan for a bigger recreational space, not a micro park, but a bigger recreational space on the Southville where a covered space would go. And I also advocated, you know, when the original RFP went out, and it was worded as purchase, and when I went back and listened to the council meeting where we talked about approving to issue the RFP, I was like, but we talked about leasing or purchasing, so then they reissued the RFP to say lease, and we didn't get any proposals for leasing. I thought maybe the groups that wanted public space there would come up with an idea for how to lease that space, or how to, I mean, could have offered, well, we said for a dollar a year and do something with it, but, but we do need to coordinate and have some combination of how do we support our processors trying to grow in an area when there's, when fishing is suffering, and there's been so much consolidation of shoreside processing? And how do we make use of the waterfront space that we have? So I don't have a strong recommendation, I just offer those thoughts on perspective. Thank you.
Anybody else? On the planners' report, that's two weeks.
Yep.
And unfinished business, nothing on this agenda. New business, disposal review, proposal for a portion of Lot 1, Block 7A Tide Water Development Park, Breakwater Phil Lot. Can we get a motion from somebody?
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I move to recommend that city council approve the proposal from Camp Two's Alaska Wild Seafoods to purchase a portion of Lot 1, Block 7A Tide Water Development Park.
To your motion, sir. Can we just do a quick, and then we'll go through the proposal? Or do you want to just go through the proposal evaluation?
Yeah, I'd be happy with starting with going through.
And because we only have one, it's basically, how does this fit? Instead of really a score, it's just, does it fit? Is it really good or really bad?
Yes.
Okay?
The numbers to find a base?
Do we want to do them, each person go around, or just do each item?
I was thinking we just go do each item.
Okay. So let's start with alignment with comprehensive plans and goals.
So yeah. Yeah, do you want to lead it?
It's your motion.
Does the project support the vision and goals outlined in the comprehensive plan? I was giving it a 12 out of 15. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
I'd like to, 14.
Anybody have a?
Yeah, I think, yeah, definitely supports economic growth that streamlines Camp Two's operations.
I would maybe go to more of like a 10. I think there's still maybe like the cultural preservation aspect, or like utilizing it as a larger community space. Like, I agree with some statements here earlier about like a chain link fence down there, that just sounds heinous. So I think some more vision on like how the layout of what that space could look like for public use would be beneficial. I don't know.
I was kind of looking at more with the enhanced architectural design.
Okay, yeah, right, the other criteria. In that case, then, I would change mine to 12 or 13.
Can I mention that there's nowhere in there saying that we're going to do a chain link fence anywhere in this proposal?
No, and it said that, that you're going to plant coverings to kind of make it the separation. Is that what, what I read?
Okay. Sorry about that.
Neil, are you having additional comments?
Well, I just kind of land on 14. Yeah, this business is pretty cool business to fit for our culture and our community. I'm going to stick on 14.
So I guess kind of going in the middle, landing on a 13?
Yeah, thereabouts. It's really more of a, is this good?
We're just trying, we're just trying to get an idea, yeah?
Yeah. I'm looking for either really good or really bad.
I think that lands on the good side.
I think that lands on the good side.
Okay, so. Yeah, so support of key strategies. Does the project align with specific strategies and actions identified in the comprehensive plan? I think so.
For me, I wonder this, bein' a new one.
It what?
I'm wondering this. If it's done, I was hoping to see more money come in, but I also understand that I'm not their business, so they're doing, I bet they're very best at making that offer possible. But I was hoping for more money.
Yeah.
Feel like this is like a, better than the last proposal I was getting. But it's just quite valuable, this property.
I feel like they had a good reason why they came up with that price.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would say that, in my personal opinion, the property is undervalued, but that is what it was assessed at. So I'm not sure if I want to second-guess the assessment. So I guess, moving on to enhancement of survival of life, how does the project improve residents' daily lives, eeg recreation housing, public space? I again rank that pretty high, just because they are including public space in the proposal. It's all well and good to be talking high in the sky, oh, we want a big covered space out there. So far, I've heard a lot of talk about that and not much action. I think having something there is better than not having anything there, which I think is what would happen if we don't move forward on this proposal. So, yeah, I just, is my opinion on that.
I agree.
So I went pretty high on that.
I agree, because it's been years since that lot has remained empty.
Yeah.
It just, it's enhancing it by this, the picnic table, you know, what they are proposing is an enhancement of what it is currently. And I know that this would be widely used. So I do think that it's an enhancement. And like has been stated, people, people could have come forward when there was a lease option, you know? To do what Kristen had said in, over the past.
Yeah, I saw it.
What did you say, what were you scoring it at then?
I gave it a nine, but I could be talked down.
What were you thinking, girl?
I was thinking about an eight.
Gail?
Seven.
Eight.
I'm on like the seven line, so maybe seven or eight as a group?
Okay.
I feel like, I like that they considered the public in the proposal. It's like one of the three stages of development, and then they've obviously given some thought to it. I think it touches at what the community wants to see down there, but maybe it falls shorter than how, you know, certain groups like Parks and Rec and/or the Covered Spaces group might want to see that space utilized. I don't know if there's a way to expand upon that design to put five tables down there, or, you know, I don't know, or one gazebo and a few tables, or something like that. But yeah, I think. Seven, eight?
Okay. Okay, so then enhanced design, does the project promote enhanced architectural design for community members?
Sorry, what are you guys going to land on, seven or eight?
I think eight is what we.
Eight.
Okay. Okay.
Three eights and two sevens.
Then, does the project promote enhanced architectural design for community members? I gave it a two. Like it's not, like it's a dock with a adjoining gravel lot with a couple picnic tables on it, that's not exactly like gorgeous, but.
No.
Sure.
I gave it a 10, because I think.
It's half a five.
Out of five, okay. Overall.
Enhanced design.
Okay.
Just the enhanced design.
Okay, oh, yeah. Two.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all in agreement on that?
Yep.
Okay, was community input sought and incorporated into the proposal?
I'd give them a five. I think they've been.
They've done everything, yes.
Coming to so many meetings and have had so many proposals shot down that like, they keep incorporating what we want to see them do, and they keep getting shot down, so five on that.
That's also.
Or, yeah, somebody else?
I want to add, they also had to go before the city council. And they've gotten their input, there's been so many input through the whole thing. And that's really, the city council's the one who said, "Go ahead with the RFP." "We're not really at the point where to denying the project, it's really," and we don't deny it, "we're just going to be recommending it. Is this an acceptable proposal? It's the city council's problem, and I'll let them make the call on, well, yeah, the planning commission said this, but we're going to cancel it or we're going to accept it." So, and that's the way it's always been. So we're just looking at it. So, and that's the way it's always been, so we're just looking at it to see, should this move up to the city council? So.
If I could give them higher than a five, I would because they really have.
Yeah.
Listened.
Yeah.
And brought back.
And not everybody can have everything they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to go a little bit lower just because, you know, they didn't like send out leaflets or something, but I think, yeah, you're right. This is, it's been going around in circles for long enough that it definitely deserves a five.
Do you guys know how many, oh, I guess we can't talk to them right now?
I don't think so.
We can.
You can ask to suspend the rules and ask them questions if you'd like.
I just wanted to suspend the rules for a moment.
You have to vote on that as a share.
All those bearers suspending the rules for a little bit?
I got it.
Aye.
How many proposals have you submitted to the city for a lot along the waterfront to do a dock like this?
Three?
It's at least three.
It's at least three.
But that's a.
Beginning.
It's like from the very beginning of the whole concept, I think we'd get at least three.
Do you know like what year that might have been?
Two thousand and twenty-one, I think. I think is when it all began with our first initial idea.
And that was the one over by where you're at?
Yes, sir.
And they won't let you, the duck people are the ones holding that one back, if I understand right.
Sure, but.
Sure, but well, they're ducks to me.
Yeah, just the, I think the pushback on the environmental, maybe we believe that could be important too and so we just, you know, look for other options.
Yeah, I don't know a letter she was mentioning about earlier from the Army Corps. But it was just from pushback from other environmental groups from around town, so that's going to stop that.
The Autobahn, society Autobahns?
Yeah, the main one was, she did get threatened to get sued and that's like not something that you want when you're going to spend millions of dollars. So it's, you know, we're not going to waste our time if we think it's going to get stopped after the project.
Okay, then economic development and financial viability, economic growth, does the project directly create jobs, stimulate local business or attract investment? I gave that a ten.
Yeah.
Like it's, I think that'd be fairly straightforward. Any pushback on that?
No.
Okay. Financial feasibility, given the information in the proposal, is this project viable cost versus income generated in the business plan? I again would go marks on that. I think Cam 2's is perfectly capable of pulling off a project like this.
I agree, it doesn't say exactly how much it is going to cost, does it?
Nope.
Yeah.
And it stages things.
It stages.
For us to have participants.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm taking that on trust, just knowing Cam 2's as a, as a business. If we wanted, did we want to deduct any for not giving like specific?
We're not selling a building, we're not selling constructed stuff, we're just selling a spot. So it doesn't have as much value as a house.
Yeah.
Alone.
I would give them the four.
Yep.
Okay. Economic benefit to the city, will the project generate long-term financial benefits, i.e. increased tax revenue, reduced city costs?
Yes, yes, yes. I did, I would give five.
Yeah, I'm, I didn't give five on that one just because I, I don't think selling that lot will reduce city costs.
Well, I guess it won't reduce city costs because they are proposing that part of it be maintained by the city, correct? Is that what I?
Yeah, they were going to revert the park back to city ownership afterwards.
But I don't think that it will be. Yeah, as much as, right now they're, the city is having to plow all that.
Yeah.
And maintain that space in the winter.
Yeah, that's true.
And they won't now, so that will reduce city costs.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's.
So that's.
Yeah, they are grading, they're plowing and they're brush cutting down there, which obviously isn't a lot, but that is, it is.
So that is city cost.
Some maintenance, yeah, that is happening.
Actually, I believe the intent is to do a subdivision.
Beforehand?
Well, to sell it, we're going to have to do a subdivision. They're going to have to pay for the subdivision and that's going to subdivide, and this is part of the problem I have with it. Your plan goes outside the boundary of the lot of what's actually being offered for sale. And that's just Lot 1A of the development park. That will end up cropping down your proposed dock. And the driveway will be on city property, just like everybody else's driveway. But, but it's actually less area for you to actually purchase. My other issue is on the, going back to the cost. I'm not sure how the city came up with the valuation, whether that's the entire lot, just the pad. There's value of the pad is a lot higher than the tidlins. And since you're, if they were just talking about the pad, I think that's twenty thousand square feet total to begin with. And if you're only taking a percentage of that, yes, you should get a percentage of whatever that value is. But then you're getting a percentage of the tidlins. Now, if they had valued the whole thing, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to need to be reevaluated once the subdivision is completed and evaluated on, this is uplands and this is what the value of that is and this is tidlins and this is what it is. Then you have the problem of having to put the dock in. You have all those issues. But to legally kind of do this, you got to go through a sub, I'm a former surveyor, so that's what I used to do for a living. And so I see survey problems.
I was definitely wanting to.
Huh?
Yeah, I was definitely wanting to talk about if where they were wanting to put their dock was actually.
Right.
You can look at the plat that's on here. You can look at the plat that's on here and it does look like it is on that lot. But that, and it also does say a portion of the lot.
Right.
So.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, yep.
Yep, there's going to be a lot of.
Negotiations and engineering will come next.
The funny thing is, she was saying that there's a Coast Guard buoy or light out there. That's technically not in your lot. They just need to maintain access to it, easement to it. You're not going to be able to get that little triangle. It's going to push that property, it's going to crop it. And you're just going to follow the property, existing property line, boundary of the lot and then draw the line, the subdivision line between the two, which is actually a fairly simple sort of flat. And it's a single lot, I don't even think it comes through the planning commission if it goes through that. But that's something that needs to be formalized before you start dumping money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
If we want to.
The economic benefit to the city, did we, did we give that a number?
I believe that we were settling on five. Yeah, I think, is that what everyone?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Sustainability and environmental stewardship, environmental impact, does the project prioritize environmental stability and compliance with regulations?
They're going to need to go through the permitting process and to kind of say that in here to get put in the dock and to do what needs to be done.
Yeah.
I mean, they haven't done it yet, but there's no reason to do it until they have a go.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was saying, that, you know, there wasn't anything specific in it, but they stated that they were going to, so I think.
Yep.
It's a matter of. So I, I went with an eight.
Yeah, okay.
Is that what you did too?
I'll take an eight.
Yeah.
Long-term viability, will the project have sustainable benefits and be resilient to future challenges?
I think so.
I'd give that a four.
Okay, I can do four. We don't have any, any issues with that? Number five, proposer qualifications and experience, track record, does the proposer have a history of successful similar projects? I went with definitely. They haven't built a dock before, but they've built a whole bunch of other stuff, so.
Yep, they outlined their success in Cordova, so.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, track record and local knowledge and partnerships, I think that's a very easy five and five. Implementation plan and risk management, is the proposed timeline realistic and achievable? I think so. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how many docks they'll have to get in a row to get a dock in that quick, but it was like.
They're on track with the stage.
Phase one was twenty-four to thirty-six months.
I mean, that, that seems, yeah, perfectly well achievable.
As this, as a former surveyor, do you, do you think that lot could be like replatted or?
Oh, yeah, that's a piece of cake.
Okay.
It's just.
Couple weeks, couple months?
Um. They're going to need to have a surveyor and they may already have information on it. They're going to have to come in and say, and then this is what I'm planning. They can, with a preliminary plat and approval from the city, move ahead with construction before, you know, to, for the permitting and whatnot with the city's concurrence.
And no getting, yeah, permitting for construction on tidlins is definitely can take some time.
Right.
And I'm not sure what the exact timeline on that would be.
But that's, that's pretty, you know, unknown. The survey isn't that long, it's just getting a surveyor here and getting a surveyor to get it done. Because they, they take them back to their office and there's a lot of stuff in those offices.
We have a local resident that's actually working on finishing his certification.
Who's that?
Bill's son.
Oh.
Yeah. Drew.
Cool.
Yeah.
I think he's working with, yeah, he's working with somebody now.
He was.
He was.
Yeah.
Did he get a degree?
You had to ask him, but yeah, he's finishing his like state certification.
Keep it on, keep it on here.
Yeah.
Then our potential, so did we go with five on that?
Yes.
Yes.
And then our potential risks identified with clear mitigation strategies?
I'm thinking the only thing that she's pointed out was the easement to make sure we can get to the Coast Guard buoy. Or the Coast Guard can get to it and the city can get to it if necessary.
Yeah.
Not public access, but. Yeah, the only other thing is there's going to be survey markers for that boundary. And there's always, a surveyor has the authorization to go through, but doesn't need a written easement. Just notice.
So do we want to go high on that one as well?
Yep.
Okay. Five and five for that one? Okay, then last one, adherence to municipal code and legal compliance. I didn't see anything that I flagged as out of compliance. Anyone else catch anything?
I did not. It doesn't have to be redone or anything, just that.
No.
It's in the industrial.
And this is?
It's not zoned currently, so it will have to be zoned. If, if we pick a use for it, it'll be zoned according to the use.
Okay, so.
That's the second one there, right? Zoning and land use regulations?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess we're still in compliance with land disposal process?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no issues, five?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the next one.
The zoning is just another meeting.
Yeah, that, we'll just do that after we.
Well, we have to know what we're zoning, that takes the survey first.
Yeah.
So do we leave it blank for now?
Well, I mean, we're going to make it whatever we need it to be, so.
Yeah.
So there, there isn't any roadblock currently.
It's kind of NA at this point, just because it's not zoned.
Right.
Okay, so just.
Doesn't apply, is that what you say this part doesn't apply this time?
Uh.
Technically.
Or just strike it.
Strike it.
We just take that off and then.
Over the total.
Self out.
Take that off, the total and.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Okay.
She's got all the numbers there.
Do we want to calculate that real quick or, I think, it marked pretty high across the board.
I think it's real high.
Yeah.
I think we're all.
And we're not comparing it with another, so.
I don't see an issue with the proposal as presented. I see issues, but not with the proposal of moving forward with purchasing the remainder of that lot. They're going to leave some of that lot, they're not going to leave us a lot for that park.
Okay.
So where are we at then on?
Yeah, did we want to calculate that real quick or are we?
I'm voice recording, so if somebody has a calculator, I can, I can get you a.
I only use my head and I can't use that many numbers.
Here, what's that?
Right here and then on the next page.
Thirteen.
That's Tanja's job. Wait a minute, that's my job.
I'm going on the limit and say it's going to be the highest scored proposal that we're going to score tonight.
And then the real question is, is it acceptable? Is it?
Okay, I think that makes ninety-five.
Out of?
About minus fifteen.
Minus fifteen, so out of one oh five.
Out of one oh five, so. That's a pretty high score, actually.
It's hard to argue with that.
Okay. Do we want to go around and talk for emails?
Yeah, it's your motion.
Okay.
This is where.
Okay, so I, I very much think that we should go ahead with moving forward on this proposal. I, I think that the arguments for green space in Cordova, I, they are somewhat compelling. Like it is nice to have places to go and, you know, watch the boats, but the boat harbor is public access. You can't just go down and walk the docks if you want to look at boats. As far as like green space, we are surrounded by the Tuukat National Forest. From the harbor to Crater Lake Trail is less than a half an hour. I, like, this isn't a city, we're not lacking in places to go out and be in nature and places to go out and like. There's opportunities for that. There aren't a million places to put a commercial dock for a processing facility like Cam 2's. Cam 2's, we've talked about it, they've come in numerous times with numerous proposals. Got shot down for one reason or another or got moved forward, but with caveats that they may or may not want to comply with. We were just talking about the T-Dock last month, month before, whichever. last month, month before, whichever. They need somewhere to facilitate their operations. I think that this is, if not the perfect place for them, then a really good spot for them. So, yeah, I, I really want to move forward with this.
I was the second, and you pretty much said everything that I was going to say, just maybe not in exact words, but I'm not sure that I could state it any better. I do agree with that this seems to be a great spot for them. They are willing, they, time and time again, they have shown that they are willing to listen to the public, and they care. They care about what the public has to say, and they're not wanting to take green space away from them. They want people to still enjoy this, this spot. I agree that this, that we have no reason but not to move forward, you know, that we should move forward with this as a recommendation.
I have mixed feelings. This is like my number one favorite company on the planet. Perfect fit for our community. But close that spot, going out there and remembering friends and family who didn't come back. It's, I really liked the little place they have in Harbor. It's nice. But for me, that spot is pretty precious, and I tried to talk to NVE about considering putting it higher on their list for any extra money we had, and I didn't get any big swell of support for that. So I'm, uh, yeah, I didn't get the support that I wanted for us to turn that into our green space. That's the reality of it, so. We're not gonna get a better business plan, I don't think, at this time. It's not gonna make us killing, but it's not going to hurt our community. And it rated high. So I'm, I'm mixed about selling it, but if we have to sell it, I like this plan.
Sir?
Yeah, I think I agree with everybody's statement so far. I think it's definitely a contentious site that the community cares a lot about. And I think that this proposal checks a lot of boxes, you know? Is any proposal for that lot ever gonna be perfect? I don't think so. I just think that's just the reality of that lot, but I think they did a pretty good job of trying to meet community needs. And, you know, trying to also put in language of like, you know, how the city has a plan for North Harbor expansion projects in the future, and, you know, trying to, I guess one thought that I had was like, where would people that would be going out to access those picnic benches, where would they be able to park? You know, because a lot of people like to drive out there right now, and so that was one thing that I was like thinking about, like, would there be space for people to park there, or are they only able to access it by foot traffic, you know? That was just one thought I had about it. Not that it would be a very long walk, but I mean, that road is already kind of narrow. I guess there's some parking along where the old science center is, you know, but and in their proposal, they talk about the expansion at that bottleneck, so I think that would also increase access for foot traffic and vehicle traffic out there, so overall, I think it's a good proposal, and I'm happy to see them move forward, or us, and hopefully them move forward.
There's nothing to add to that. Do we need to vote on this? So, the motion was to recommend to the city council to approve.
Do you want to, do you want to just reread the motion on the record?
No.
Okay.
Recommend that the city council approve the proposal from Camp Two to purchase a portion of Lot One, Block 7A, Tidewater Development Park.
Okay, and then let's just do a roll call on this, so we got it. Mark Hall?
Yes.
Uh, Sarah Trumbly?
Yes.
Chris Rainey?
Yes.
Gail Foodie?
Yes.
Sean Denadel?
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion passes. And this will move on with your recommendation to city council.
Any additional audience comments at this, this time, round number 11?
Well, I'd still like to speak, because, I mean, I don't get me wrong, I love you guys and everything that you do, but this is a phenomenal space, and I've gone to Juneau and Sitka and all these other communities, and they have, like, I love the whale that they have in Juneau, speaking out at that thing, and I really feel like I would like to see us, even though they worked so hard on this, think a little longer. I mean, this is like a, it, it's a, it's a big deal, because, you know, like we have said, that all the waterfront is taken up, and I, I do like going down in the harbor and visiting the boats, but this is a very special place. And, I mean, I could see why you voted yes, but I still will be there at the city council meeting to speak out against it.
I'll speak up. I, I, I want to just offer to work with anybody who wants to pull some resources together, because what I heard tonight is we need covered space, we've lost covered space, we don't want, the city has no money, there is no grant money out there. So whatever we do is gonna come from citizens, so if people want to pull some ideas together, work, that'd be great, I think that'd be awesome, because I too have, was just in Seattle and seen their, their Olympic Sculpture Park and all of the fabulous things they've done, you know, when they tore down the viaduct and, and really opened up that whole waterfront. But it's gonna take, it's gonna take some real elbow grease, and I'm happy to work with folks for anybody who wants to do that, to make our waterfront an attractive public recreation space. I mean, I think that's what communities have done for, well, anyway, I don't need to go into all that. I was just gonna say that when, when this country was being built, we turned our back to the waterfront. The backs of buildings faced rivers, rivers were dumping grounds, the oceans were dumping grounds. And now we're sort of reclaiming all that and making it open space and public recreation space, which means having to rethink how we do all that, which I think is good, but it, it's gonna take a lot of effort to, to do that, and I'm happy to work with folks if you, if you want to have a working group or talk about how do we raise money to do some of these things. Yeah, because right now we don't have much, but, but yeah, I mean, private citizens can put proposals together, can, you know, raise money for covered spaces that we could put on public land, form partnerships. It's gonna take a lot of that, so, yeah, I'd welcome ideas.
And, you know, I'm kind of coming in kind of late at this point, but I would really like to talk to you more about any other possible options.
Yeah, I mean, they have offered to set aside public space, and I think we could make some really good use of that and make it really attractive, so we should, yeah. And, and I still think that doing that same thing on the South Phil, and who knows, we could ask him to, I mean, they, they own that lot on the corner, and if they end up building on the Breakwater Phil, is there a chance of having more of a green strip along that edge that goes all the way to the corner? We could ask. But we can still develop, like, the city owns all that parking lot space, which is not, maybe isn't laid out the best, and could, you know, more of that could be utilized for green space. It doesn't have to be just the micro park that's there now, we can reconfigure that space also and make it, I mean, it's, it is a parking lot at this point, but there's a lot you can do to beautify waterfront space, and I think we can, we can think a little more expansively about how we do that in those areas. And thank you to the planning commission for your time.
Yeah, we'd like to thank the planning commission and everybody in the city for all your time. I know this isn't easy stuff for anybody, and for all of our time, we'd like to be doing our favorite hobby at home, so. We appreciate the hard work. We put in a lot of hard work. We feel like we're offering something that would be very beneficial to the whole town. I don't think we're, you know, gonna take away a lot of what goes on down there, and it's still a beautiful middle ground for everything in the community. And we're excited if it goes with her, and we're excited to work with the city and the community on doing it.
Just the biggest thank you for everyone's time. It's, you know, it's been a really, really long journey for all, and we, we, hopefully there's a, the, at the end, we see the end light at the end of the tunnel, so we just appreciate everyone's time. Thank you so much.
Commissioner comments. Sir?
Yeah, always, uh, always a tough job weighing in on what community members may or may not want to see, and just trying to score it and in an unbiased way. Looking out for like, I mean, honestly, I think with this specific proposal, I, yeah, I was like so torn, because, yeah, that lot is like such an amazing asset for the community, but at the same time, this is a fishing community, like, that's what this economy is based on. And like, they're talking about, you know, trying to add additional fishing time and do processing in different times of the season. Like, that's gonna bring more money to town, uh, and more landings here, which will increase the city revenue, so it's, you know, kind of hard to argue.
Mr. Rainey?
Yeah, no, I just want to, yeah, thank everyone for, for coming out and, uh, speaking on, speaking their part. I think I might have come across as a little bit, a little bit harsh and a little bit dismissive. Didn't mean to do that, but, yeah, no, I, I think I will say that as far as your guys' points on, yeah, creating nice recreational covered space, I, I do think that it would be worth reaching out to Camp Two's and seeing if you might be able to merge the two of yours visions for that lot, and maybe we can get a, a greater community consensus in that, in that respect.
Thank everybody for coming out. It is nice to hear both sides, and obviously, when we come here, minds aren't made up, and we are willing to hear everybody. I do think that, I'm thankful that you guys put so much work into your proposals, and it's, you have listened, and trying to accommodate everybody while still growing your business. And I appreciate that, and thanks to the staff for bringing this back to us, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Ma'am?
I, I liked using this process. It helped me able to look at it before I came here and looked at you guys' faces, so that when I sit with myself on my decision, I still feel a little more angry in my own decision. And I'm able to take in your input, too. Thanks. Thanks for cleaning it up with us.
Well, I like the fact that they put some green space in, and if we can get that second lot designated when it's platted as green space, that, that kind of locks it if it's platted that way, and that may be a way to preserve that one small strip. And that doesn't prevent an organization from putting in shelters or doing something else. Even putting in your own fence with murals of whatever fish and whatnot, this stuff that was by the science center can be put as a divider there on the city side, so. But that would be the public funding that, however they want, you know, as an organization would be an alternative, so. And I want to thank Ms. Amanda.
Thanks. Thank you.
Hats to the commissioner comments. Anybody have anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.